Okay, we have arrived at the magic time of 6:45, so I'll call the meeting to order for our December 14th meeting and our last meeting of the year for 2020 barring any special meetings we would have to have. But we're not, we don't think that that's going to happen. So if you would rise with me and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. And we'll move on. And if we could please have a roll call, Secretary Slager.
Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Rivard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you. And we have established a full quorum. We'll move on to the adoption of our agenda and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Rivard. Trustee. Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
And President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted as presented and that brings us to gratitudes. So was anybody have any gratitudes before we get to the special gratitude? They'd like to share.
All right.
I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tracy.
I was just gonna say I can share one, just a thank you to teachers again. Just rolling with so many changes and the administrators and back and forth for elementary. I just have to quick share my second grader. He made the comment to me, he goes, teachers are so prepared. He goes, teachers are prepared for anything. And I just, I just thought that was really sweet. I made sure to share that with his teacher, but it is true. So just wanted to give them a shout out again.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to echo that appreciation for that flexibility, not only on the part of our students, but not only on the part of our teachers, but also on the part of our students and our parents. Last week was a doozy. We did not anticipate the complexity of how quickly we were going to have to make it some changes in terms of being remote and in person and yeah, but people just rallied and we got it figured out. And I'd really like to just call a moment of attention towards the the team at Campus Kids. So I had a parent reach out to me on Sunday night in a, in a pretty desperate moment, just saying that she couldn't do it by herself. She had two young children. They were going through, she was going through a divorce with her husband and just literally was at wit's end between trying to work and go to court and figure things out. They didn't know what their housing status was going to be. And you know, she ended the email with, I'm the worst teacher on the planet. And, and so I reached out to Beth Whaley and to Teresa Schlump first thing on Monday morning. And within a matter of, you know, a couple of hours, they had reached out to the parent, had established some supports for the family and also are providing care through Campus Kids for the kindergartner and for the preschooler so that those two little learners can engage in some learning and take a little bit of pressure off the family. And so it's just that, that can do spirit and in doing what it takes to, to make things happen for families. That is something that I'm incredibly grateful for.
Thank you. And that was shared with the entire staff too in the recording and that was definitely a touching moment. So that was very, very nice work. So thank you everybody for that. So Santa Claus made a little stop at district office today and there was little packages for Chris and some of the other district, Jen, people. And we have Scott who is going to be opening his, in its token presence, folks. It's just, it's a thought because of the 2020 year. Our, the whole board, we are just so appreciative of everything, but Scott's going to open his gift publicly from the board to share part of our thinking about how grateful we are and showing that during this Christmas season.
Perfect. Thank you. So there are two boxes, so big and a small and a card. So I'll always start small because I like to go big. So in the first gift is a deck of waterproof, clear playing cards. With a note, so I'll read that. Happy Christmas or Merry Christmas and Happy 2020, 2021 New Year. The Board of Education cannot express enough our sincere gratitude for all that you have given and accomplished in this 2020 pandemic school year. We appreciate so much that you have dug deep and have given so much for our students, the CSPS team and the stability of the Cedar Springs community. How does one commemorate the 2020 school year? We chose this deck of cards, not just any deck of cards, but waterproof, clear playing cards. The original meaning of the deck of cards, 52 cards for 52 weeks in the year. Two colors for day and night, four suits for four seasons. Card games were an agricultural calendar that told us about the weeks and seasons. School calendars are based on agricultural calendars and this school year, this school calendar year has been like no other. This waterproof, clear deck of playing cards represents your service for the 2020 school year as being flexible. You've been more flexible than probably ever before in your career. Hand washable, these cards can be sanitized, just like our hands. They're easy to shuffle as we shuffle and shift with ever so short notice or press conference, usually on Friday afternoons. They're 100% waterproof. These cards will not get saturated with water as you did not get saturated with all the new experiences, expectations and procedures. You absorbed what was needed and you kept moving forward and clear. You always search for clarity in every situation. We hope that 2021 will not be another 52 pickup card game. However, regardless what may come, we can, we will, we are in this together. Breathe and happy holidays, the Cedar Springs Board of Education 2020, Misty, Trent, Jeff, Matt, Tracy, Shannon and Heidi. So thank you for that. There and I do love games. We'll put those to good use. And Coloradoopoly, thank you so much. It's perfect. As the board knows that my, my family and I love to visit Colorado for skiing and adventures on a regular basis. So we'll put that to great use as well. Thank you so very, very much. We appreciate it.
And it takes a small portion of that you had to cancel a skiing trip because of the pandemic. So you can relive some things.
Nope, I will, I will definitely do that. So thank you so much. So my notes from the board, as a board of education, we take this time to, or we take this time at the holidays to be grateful and honor your leadership in our CSPS district. No one signs up or no one signed up to lead in a pandemic, but you've done that with genuine grace, skill and sheer determination, working day and night to formulate the best plan possible for CSPS. Our choice for Christmas this year is the board game Coloradoopoly. One of the first things we learned about you is that your family enjoys board games. Board games bring laughter, decrease stress, create happiness, lower blood pressure and all the things we wish for you and your family. Monopoly was started in 1935. It was intended to be an educational tool. Imagine that. This Colorado version of Monopoly is to, in some small way, to take place of the skiing trip that you had to cancel due to the pandemic situation. It is our hope that as you play this game with your loved ones, it will bring back memories of past trips and plans for future trips to Colorado. Just as you build memories with your family, your daily leadership builds memories for our Cedar Springs students with the Cedar Springs staff and for the Cedar Springs community. Have a blessed Christmas as we anticipate a hopeful new year. So thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas to everybody and thank everyone for all of their, their efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to our high school representatives and we have Mia Cooper and Kira Vanderkoy. So if you'd like to update us, what, how the high school's doing and what the, what situation this pandemic has left you in.
So for student council, considering we're not in school, we had limited options to do for the, like, for the winter season. So we planned some virtual spirit days and today we did a winter wonderland, which would be like snow gear. And then on Tuesday, we're doing red and green. On Wednesday, we're doing an ugly sweater. Thursday, we're doing a white out for snow and then Friday, we're having pajama day. So today it went pretty well. We had quite a bit of participation, not as much as we do when we're in school, but all of my teachers did participate. And then we're also working on creating a nice video to send out to the teachers as a thank you for everything that they have put up with for online schooling.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Kira or wonderings? Okay. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Kira.
Okay, we move on to our consent items. So I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Don't move, don't move.
We're support.
And support.
Okay, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Trustee Rivard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser. She texted me, her internet's acting wacky. And President Reed, yes, the consent items are approved as presented. We will move on to our discussion items for tonight. And first, we have the Cedar Springs Public Schools Extended Learning Plan Report with Jen Haberling and Chris Lahey.
Good evening. I have to say, I appreciate the analogies that you made in that note to Scott about the deck of cards as a former English teacher. That's, that's really great that you made all those fun connections. That's very cool. So you have in front of you the extended learning plan and Chris can talk a little bit about attendance. And then I'll take the opportunity just to update you on what our status is. As you well know, we're fully remote until January 8. And unless health conditions change or our staffing needs warrant it, we're hopeful that we'll be back in person at that time.
Yeah, as far as attendance goes, if you've had a chance to take a look at that, you know, we're still doing great in the younger levels now that we're remote. You see a little bit of that working in there. Obviously they're still recorded as in-person learners, but they have been remote for the week following Thanksgiving. But yeah, the numbers are still very good in the 90 percentile or upper 90% to 100% in most categories. So we're doing well above what we need to do to meet compliance for the state of Michigan.
And when we get to the public comment section of tonight's meeting, I'll be sure to record any comments in that report. That would be on our transparency link and uploaded, uploaded to the state reporting site. If there's anything related to our extended learning plan.
Chris, when you look at attendance and I'm sure you talk with other financial people in the other districts, what is happening in West Michigan? Is the, is the attendance, are we in line, a little bit better, a little bit worse than what's happening in general?
Jeff, do you ask that from a day-to-day attendance or from a enrollment standpoint?
Day-to-day attendance, please.
From a day-to-day standpoint, it sounds like we're pretty much right in line. And Jen, you can probably answer this question as well. You know, the long, the, excuse me, the younger grades are very high attendance. And then obviously as we get up into the high school grades, it's a little bit more difficult to get those kids, especially the ones that you maybe, you know, have other interests and don't, don't enjoy school as much to get them to show up on a day-to-day basis. But still, I would say above or at least at from what I've heard from my counterparts.
Yep. And I would second that, Chris. I'm hearing from curriculum directors across the area that at the secondary level, we're performing above what many local districts are seeing considerably above. One of my counterparts mentioned 40% of the students were absent at the secondary level in her district. So I feel like while our numbers are not exactly precisely where we would want them to be, as high as we'd want them to be, they're much higher than what many are seeing in the area.
And again, for those numbers, just to, you know, those are, those percentages are based on the guidelines laid out by MDE. So in order to be counted, those students just have to be present for two days per week or complete two assignments per week and they count towards that attendance. So.
And we know that that's not going to get them where they need to be for their long-term goals. So we're certainly delivering much more than that from an academic standpoint. The survey data that I shared in one of the Red Hawk weekly updates was a big celebration of what students are saying about the efforts that teachers are making and the level of instruction that's happening across the board really. So I, our teachers are thankful that they're able to delivery, deliver in one mode of instruction rather than having to deliver in two or three different modes of instruction. The consistency gives us an opportunity to be much higher quality.
Any other questions? All right. We'll see if we have anything else to add later on. And thank you for taking notes, Jen. All right. We'll move on then to our discussion item B, which is our financial update from Chris Lahey.
Okay. Thank you very much. So for my financial update for, for this meeting, I have a few things. Obviously you have the AP, the purchase card reports, the year-to-date budget update. We're getting those state aid payments now regularly. So that's very nice. That's all attached in the board packet. So please feel free to ask questions as you have them or email or call me anytime. A few things going on right now and it's not really a financial update. You may recall some time ago, we, we made the decision to upgrade the district phone system. We haven't followed the timeline that we certainly wanted to follow with that, but you know, COVID-related supply chain issues have, have delayed it as, as well as uncertainties. We talked about doing it over Thanksgiving break, but we were fearful that that might not be enough time and we didn't want to have no phones coming back during these uncertain times. So it just seemed best to push that off until Christmas break. So Moss Communications, excuse me, are in the district right now. They've, they're bringing in all of the hardware and they're actually going to complete that work next week, the 21st through 23rd. So one building at a time, they will actually shut down the phones, will be on break and they will implement that new phone system. So very exciting. You remember that was, that was something that the board approved back during the summer months when Chris Dart and Rob Egler joined us for that meeting. I wanted to throw in here just a little bit more details. I know I've spoken quite a bit about the coronavirus relief funds. Just to give you guys some more background. Some, some new guidance was issued by, by Treasury and MDE on November 20th. So I thought I'd include that here and I certainly won't read through the whole thing. But this does lay out all the non-exclusive examples of COVID-related costs that we can use those funds on. So I listed those here, kind of per the memo from MDE. A lot of things to do with, with obviously online learning, hiring new teachers, online teachers, online curriculum, digital devices, wireless hotspots, all things that we've done to really ramp up and deliver education this year, which a year ago, we did not think that we would obviously have the opportunity to do. So some blessings. One thing I did want to point out as we go through this fiscal year and as next month, you'll see a budget amendment from me on January 11. It's very interesting and I've spoke to our auditors and I've spoken to other districts, but the FAQ from the Department of Treasury, this is the US Department of Treasury, laid out guidance that expenses up to $500 per pupil are eligible expenditures and they're not going, districts do not need to document their specific usage. Up to $500 per pupil. So I ran the numbers on that and I have that on here. You can see it on my screen. We've received just over $1.4 million in coronavirus relief funds, which equates to about $404 per student. So we're under that $500 per student threshold. I, I hate to be a bore, but we are still, much to the dismay of some of the members in my department, I think. We are still tracking those expenditures and we are still going to code them accordingly, just in case if things change. That way my revenues match my expenses. You do things the right way. And if you go above and beyond, great. So that's how we're handling that. And you may see that if you look deep in the weeds on the, on the budget amendment. But just to give you guys an update on that. So those funds do have to be expended by December 30th of 2020, which is interesting and it's been quite a hot topic. We will meet that goal. We're going to meet that deadline. I've been creative, but we are going to do it. But I've heard now that that will get extended as well. So better be safe than sorry. And then lastly, our investments. I, I, this is something that I've done in a previous district, actually two previous districts as well. I know it was done here prior to me, you know, report those interest earnings because we were just in such a wonderful time and I put some comparatives here on the bottom. And now it's almost like, man, I'm not sure that I want to include this anymore because in November, we had over $13 million invested and, and you can see our November earnings, they're really not much to write home about. So I thought, man, maybe I should just take that off the board meetings altogether. But regardless, they're on here. Our aggregate rate of return was 0.04% and this is just result of historically low market interest rates. It's cheap to borrow money, but it's unfortunately, it's also, we're not earning much on our investment. So for the sake of comparison, last year, November 2019, or I'm sorry, November of 2019, the district brought in and earned over $13,000, almost $14,000 in that month alone with less money, $2.7 million invested at that time. So what a difference a year can make. That's my, that's my report. Any questions?
No, but I appreciate that you're having the team keep tracking.
Yeah, it just feels like that would be, that is the right thing regardless. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to our discussion item C, which is the bidding and the purchase of HVAC equipment for 2021 bond projects. And we're going to Chris Lahey again.
Okay, so this was something that came up relatively quickly, as I'm sure you all are aware. This was a part of our bond discussions with the Triangle and GMB team last week on Thursday. So working with, with those fine team members, we put this together really today. So that's why it was added to Board Book a little bit later than we would have liked it. Actually, was that Friday, Scott and Ken? I don't recall. May have been. Regardless, so the whole point of this, Scott, I think you're muted, but the, the whole point of this is just to get out in front of some of the big purchases that we're going to have to make ahead of the summer 2021 bond work. So this is a real quick overview. I wanted to present this to you guys, to the board in this meeting, and then we'll come to you with more information and recommendations, dollar amounts during the January 11th, 2021 board meeting. So jump over here real quick. So I kind of took the who, what, when, where, why approach with this. So what this is, this is, we're seeking board approval and this is going to be something, obviously, as we move through our bond work, that we'll, we'll be doing quite a bit of. This is to purchase classroom unit ventilators, a chiller and two boilers at Cedar Trails. I did, whoops, I did put a a PDF picture on here, but it doesn't look like it's showing up. But just basically lays out the diagram of what that'll look like in trails. But the, the big purchases are the ventilators. Those are the things that go against the wall, obviously, and heat and cool the rooms. So these are the amounts. And the, the big reason here is why, why are we doing this and why are we coming to the board now for something that we're not going to need until the summer? So the, the, the big reason is cost savings and planning purposes. So pre-purchasing of this equipment will, will save Cedar Springs about 6% by Triangle's approximations. And obviously in my aforementioned interest earnings, the money's really not going to do us that much good sitting. So we might as well, we might as well take our savings this way. It allows Triangle and GMB to begin approved shop drawings several months sooner. And in turn, that's going to make the projects more attractive to contractors to bid as they know there's going to be less things in the way as they go through. So they're not going to be waiting on those drawings. They're not going to be waiting on delivery times. They can show up, they can tear out, they can install and everything's moving forward. Obviously less change orders. And we set the delivery date. We can say, we want these delivered to the district in June rather than waiting on the supply chain and it creeps later into the summer and the project is delayed. So really allows us to get out in front of things. Another thing to consider, the fabrication time, the lead time. Pre-COVID, I'm told it was about 10 weeks. It's currently 16 weeks. Who knows what's going to happen in the new year with fabrication times? So all these things really add up to, to make this a really smart decision to, to purchase this equipment now. And I really liked this, Scott Jurnberg from Triangle put this in, in his email to me. Pre-planning plus problem solving equals less contingency costs later. So obviously we have those contingency costs, those unpredictables built in. We can save on the, the pre-purchase planning and we can save on, on being able to be out in front and being, you know, forthright with our contractors, having a good plan laid out ahead of time. So the timeline shakes out like this. You know, we wanted to bring this to you tonight. There's no action on it tonight, but just more of an information to the board. GMB will prepare a bid package this week. Then Triangle will work with Ken Simon on his preferred vendors and issue the bid package by Friday of this week, actually. So we'll get the bid package out, which will allow them to have their, their several weeks to collect bids, have a bid opening. And then we will be able to provide recommendations to you, the Board of Ed, at our next meeting on January 11th, 2021. So that's a real quick overview. I'll invite Scott or Ken to add anything that I may have missed and then any questions anyone has. Pretty exciting because it means that we're getting going and this is the good stuff. We're really, really, I think I speak for the whole team when we say, we're really excited about 2021 because we're going to get to do some really neat stuff for the, for the staff, students and community here with this bond.
And I think the important to note is, you know, Chris had mentioned, we're earning, you know, right around 1% on, on our investments right now. This would in turn actually allow us to earn roughly 6% on those same dollars by investing them into equipment that we'll be later using on, on our projects. So uniquely, it does make sense from an investment perspective to, to make these moves sooner versus later.
Yep. And to that point, yeah, and keep in mind, we're not selling the bonds until May. So these are general fund dollars that we have in excess. We don't, we don't need them for, for our cash flow right now. That's one of the beautiful things of having a nice fund balance. And typically we would be earning quite a bit of money as I showed, you know, during this time, but because And typically, we would be earning quite a bit of money as I showed, you know, during this time, but because of conditions, we're really just not. So this is a great way to just help the district from a holistic standpoint and use these dollars to make some savings.
So as we check these things off, are we going to have kind of like a bond checklist, Chris? So we will see, like for Cedar View or Red Hawk or that we've checked off all the boxes as we proceed.
Yeah, so my plan with that, especially as we get going here, I kind of wanted to get through our budget amendment. And then it, once we get into the new year, my plan is to take, really, I think my starting point will be the documents that went to Treasury that laid out. The specific projects at each building and the budgeted dollar amount. And then as we go and make purchases and expenditures such as this. Then I'll have that almost like a, a year to date type of document that, that'd be shared with the board each month. So I look for that to be coming, but absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then we'll also incorporate a promises made, promises kept approach to communicating with community. Keeping them up to speed in terms of what projects we've completed, how much those projects cost and, and where we are in terms of the. The big picture scope of the, the overall work.
Sounds good.
So Chris, we're going to take general fund dollars and prepay some of these things and then we're going to take the. Income from the sale of the bonds and replenish the general fund, is that, and can we do that?
Yeah, we absolutely can. It's a hundred percent allowable. Now, it's not going to cross fiscal years or anything of that nature. But because. Because the expenditures during this first fiscal year, this twenty twenty one fiscal year, weren't going to exceed. The cash that we need to, you know, make our general fund expenditures. That was the plan, was to wait, sell the bonds at the last minute. Obviously, as soon as we sell them, we're paying interest on them. So it allows us to maximize those bond dollars. So yes, as we, as we spend these dollars, we've actually started to pay for some. Fees to Triangle, we've started to pay for some surveying costs here and there. That will all come out of general fund. Once we sell the bonds, you know, I'm keeping a very close balance sheet account ledger of all those expenditures. And so we will just transfer that money back to the penny of what was borrowed from the general fund. And code it to the new construction funds.
Any other questions from the board? And we'll be hearing more about this.
Yeah, so as I said, we'll, much more concrete numbers, comparables, bid specs will be coming in January. I'd imagine that we'll probably have someone from Triangle or G M B joining that board meeting as well.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, that concludes our discussion portion of the meeting tonight, and that brings us to public comment. And this would be the time that if the public would like to address the board for any issue. They would have three minutes to share their thoughts and the board doesn't take action at this point. We do have a process to. Follow through, through our administration, but certainly it's a time where we are listening. So I would open it up at this time, if anybody would like to share for the three minute timetable. Any issues with the board? We do have some attendees with us tonight, so we're thinking we might, if they. Want to raise their hand, or Scott, can you see that from the host position or Matt?
Yeah, so if you'd just like to click. Under the expressions, okay, so Chris and Mary Lou Collins, are we opening up their mic?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris and Mary Lou, you're open.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Can.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Mary Lou Collins and I am asking for you to reconsider a couple of things. My son Alexander Collins passed away on December twenty ninth, two thousand and nineteen. He was sixteen years old and a junior at Cedar Springs High School. He's been in the Cedar Springs School since kindergarten and at one point or another, most of the twenty twenty one graduating students had Alex in their class. Or at least knew of him. He was active in many sports, including being on the high school golf team and a member of the band. The Cedar Springs High School marching band was like family to him. I consider Alex to be part of the graduating class of twenty twenty one. And would like you to consider putting his senior picture in the yearbook with his classmates. And letting us purchase a page in the yearbook to celebrate and honor his senior year. Over this last year, many of his classmates have done different things to honor his memory. At Alex's burial, over twenty of the high school student band members volunteered to come out and play at his gravesite burial. Some students put his initials on their baseball uniforms as a remembrance and played in honor of him. His best friend David DiPiazza honored him when he walked onto the football field to be crowned homecoming king. And dedicated his win to Alex by carrying his picture with him and putting the crown on his picture. I have made and given over a hundred green bracelets in honor of Alex's memory and many of them have been given to students. I know at least six students that have had their senior pictures taken with them on as a remembrance and honor to Alex. The twenty twenty one senior shirts this year have the signature of all the seniors on the back. And we were asked if we wanted Alex's signature on his shirt. Of course, we said yes, and not only was his signature added, but it was added in red while everyone else's is in white. There are just a few things that we know of that have been done by the students and I'm sure there are more. I feel like the school administration wants to forget about Alex, sweep him under the rug as if he never existed and just move on. But so many people, especially the students, are doing everything they can to remember him. They want, they don't want to forget. Alex still has a story to tell and he still has a voice. He was and is part of this graduating class and his graduating class wants to remember and honor him. They want to see his picture in this year's yearbook and they don't want to forget about him. Lastly, as I said before, Alex was in band and Cedar Springs High School Band was family to him. There's a large open area between the band room and the football field where the band marches out at every home football game. There's nothing there that identifies that this is the band room or that this area is designated for the Cedar Springs High School Band. We would like to put a statue of a musical note by the band doors to distinguish this and dedicate it in, in Alex's honor. There are statues, trees, benches and other things that are in place in and around the high school in honor of those that have passed. And we would like to honor Alex in the same way. As you consider our requests, I want you to try and put yourself in our shoes. Your child is a junior in high school, they've been in the same school district since kindergarten. Knowing more than half of the class and been in school with them all since the beginning. They work hard at school with their studies and join many school activities, maybe football, baseball, track, band, choir, theater. Always there, always there to cheer on their fellow schoolmates and have fun. Something happens to them and they pass away in their junior year. Wouldn't you want to do anything and everything in your power to make sure your child is remembered and honored in their senior year? That's all we are wanting to do and we ask for your help and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
I do have another hand raised. Kendra Rocha.
Hello, school board at Cedar Springs, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you, thank you. I am a family member of Alex Collins and I'm here tonight to support my aunt and uncle. And asking you to reconsider and remember my cousin Alex. I've been privileged to come into your community and see the love and support that you have. I've spent time with the high school students because they were friends with my cousin Alex. The band was his passion, golf was his passion. I spent so much time with them and I know that they want to remember him, they want his picture in the yearbook. And I would greatly appreciate you guys supporting both my family as well as your students and your community. Community by remembering my cousin and allowing his picture to be remembered in the class of twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra, for sharing. All right, is there any one else that would like to address the board this evening? If you could indicate. Yep. Looks like we have.
Rebecca DiPiazza.
Hi Rebecca, you're still muted. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Okay.
Hi, thank you for taking the time. My name is Rebecca DiPiazza. My son is David DiPiazza. He is Alex's best friend. And I know that he has been deeply bothered by the fact that Alex can't be in their yearbook. And I would like to take this time to ask you to please reconsider not letting him in. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Rebecca. All right.
So Colleen Roca is here.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, we're ready to listen.
Awesome, thank you so much. Alex was my nephew and I just want to say this to everyone. While Alex's passing is very difficult to face, it's something that. Communities, students, parents, children need to face. And this is a critical point in time that we make this open. And we let these kids celebrate his life and be a part of that yearbook. Have a remembrance statue by the band room and keep his voice alive. It is critical to the future of so many students. This is a difficult situation, we all know. But this is a time where we can cross the road and really prove that we're opening and listening to these kids. Because this is the time they need to know that we hear them. Because if they know we hear them, we might be able to reach another child in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the board? We're looking for hands.
Not seeing any.
Okay. All right, we're not seeing anyone else wishing to address the board at this time. Thank you for those that have joined and spoken tonight. And if there is any other issues, our, the board's email is listed on the website and we would be happy to hear any comments. And we will be following up in the processes that we've set forth, so thank you. So moving on with our agenda for this evening, we have our action items listed and we don't have any action for tonight, so there we go. So we'll move on to communication and for communication for the Board of Education. I just wanted to share, I, I received a compliment for the lunches that were packed. And the fun and the joy the kids have in unpacking them and somebody thought of them to pack those lunches. And they're bringing their own little piece of happiness as we're sharing that food and the, the lunches that are. Packed and then picked up by the parents in the roundabout or however that's going, so that was a positive thing that I would receive. So for communication from the Board of Education, does anyone have any other issues at this time or? Any other communication that we would? Need for planning? Okay, all right, we'll move on to Scott for your communication pieces.
No additional communication at this point, other than thank you for the opportunity to serve in twenty twenty. And we are excited for all that twenty twenty one has in, has in store. Everything.
And can we not have any more fun than we've had in twenty twenty? Have to smile and, and look at it that way, so thank you for that. So planning, our January, our next formal meeting is planned for January eleventh and that will be our organizational meeting. And we plan in the same format as we had last year. We have it scripted out, so we don't have to recreate the wheel. And we will plan to meet up then. It's appearing at this time, it's going to be in Zoom. If anything changes, of course, we'll send you an email. So having said that, happy holidays and we'll be talking and happy new year. And we'll reconvene in twenty twenty one. Thank you. So we will stand adjourned at seven thirty, right on the dot. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.